Good morning. It is nine o'clock a.m. on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022. I call the council time to order for Clark County Council. We begin with public comments, and we invite your public comment on any matter that is on today's council time agenda. Is there anyone in the hearing room or online staff that you can see wishes to speak?
Chair, I do not have anybody in the hearing room, and there are no hands raised online.
Okay, let's go to old business, and we look at the minutes for October 26. I just have one small typographical type of thing. At the very bottom, it says that Clark County adjourned, and I think we were not that final. It was probably just council time of Clark County that adjourned, if you would make that small addition. And anything else?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor with that small amendment, say aye.
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 Now, motion is passed. Next, 2.2 is the Kowalski Tribe contract. Kathleen, would you like to introduce this and have someone take it from there?
Chair, so we do have a current contract with the Kowalski Tribe regarding services being provided and how much we pay for, or the Kowalski Tribe pays for those services. Leslie has been negotiating with the tribe and has some updates for your consideration today.
Good morning, Council. For those of you who maybe weren't here when the initial contract was entered into, that was in 2017, the parties had negotiated a payment of $400,000 a year with a 2% increase per year. And at that time, the Kowalski Indian Tribe did not have much of a public safety force in terms of their officers, but since then, they have greatly increased the number of officers that they have. And so when we had an extension on the current contract until December 10th of this year, and in the meantime, we were trying to find, locate information in terms of the law enforcement, prosecution, Indian Defense, jail services, and court services, medical examiner services that have been provided over the years, and if that has changed at all. And what we've discovered is that it has significantly changed. So I will provide that information, but the first document we have is the offer from the Kowalski Indian Tribe, and that's Exhibit A, if someone could pull that up, please. So this is a letter that our office received from the attorney who represents the Kowalski Indian Tribe. And what they have stated is that because they have built up their staff at their public safety department, the tribe has authorized an offer of $120,000 per year for the next two years, and that would include an updated services agreement with the potential of a one-year renewal. And the attorney wanted me to really relay to the council the last paragraph of their letter, which is that the tribal council asked me to take special care to relay that the tribe values the support and friendship of Clark County, and we view as partners in our shared success and wish to continue growing our relationship in a positive and mutually beneficial way. One of the things that we did discuss is, as you know, the tribe is opening a hotel next year. And so we did have those discussions that the county would work on keeping track of the services that are provided over the year, and if that increases when the hotel opens, we will renegotiate in good faith on increasing that amount that is being paid by the tribe. So we will definitely keep that in mind as we go forward. So with that, we'll go through, just to give some information in terms of the numbers that the services the county has provided, so we can go to the next document. So I don't know if we can make that bigger so folks can see it better. What this is, this is information from the sheriff's office. What they did is they looked at the years from 2019 to 2022 in terms of the calls that the sheriff's office was the primary agency to respond to the calls. So if we can scroll down to the end there. So as you can see, over the years, it has significantly changed. In 2019, there were 351 calls, and they have down here the amount of money, average call estimated at one hour, and it was $88 an hour. In 2019, it was $30,888. Going to August 1 of 2022, the total calls is eight calls, and that's $704. So it has reduced significantly over the years, and that's directly related to the tribes building up their own police force. And if we go up to the top of that screen, top of that slide, to the right, you'll see that there's an area that talks about the bookings at the jail. The, for the different years, has the sheriff's office and the amount of bookings that they did, and then underneath that is the tribal police. And again, you can see the significant difference between 2019, the sheriff's office performed 70 bookings into the jail, and the tribal police at that time did five, as opposed to this year, as of August 1st, the sheriff's office only booked one individual and as the tribal police booked in '23. And then the columns below that talk about the cost of the daily bed rate. For 2019, the cost of the jail beds to the tribe was $67,158. That went down about half for 2020, and for, it's not listed there, but it says 176 days of jail beds, and the current amount, the daily bed rate for 2022 is $157.62. So that amount is approximately about $28,000 for 2022. So again, those numbers have gone down significantly. Can we go to the next slide, or the next document? Now, this is a letter, this is in 2019. This is a letter, and then the next document is the actual breakdown of the billings that the county sent to the Kowalski Indian Tribe for Indian Defense for the year of 2000, well, it's April 2017 through April 2018. You can see the amount there is $20,928. Because of the new contract, the county didn't send individual billing for services, so I don't have the amount for Indian Defense. But when we look at the PA cases for the years, that would demonstrate that the cost of Indian Defense has also gone down because the number of cases have gone down. If we could go to, let's see, the next document. This is just the breakdown of that, the letter that indicated the amount of Indian Defense costs back in, from 2018 to 2019. And then if we could go to the next one. This is from the medical examiner's office. I asked the medical examiner's office to go through their records for the years from 2019 to now, currently. And in that, I'll say, three-and-a-half-year span of time, the medical examiner's office has gone to the reservation or the ALNA twice. And the total cost of that has been a little over $1,000. Go to the next slide. That's okay. Great. This is a little hard to see, but this is from the prosecuting attorney's office, from the criminal division, and it shows the amount of cases that they've had over the years. For 2019, the PA's office had 31 cases from the tribe, and then 2020, it went down to 17, and then in 2021, it was 12. So again, that has gone down significantly. And then the other information I wanted to provide is that, in addition to the amount of money that is negotiated in the contract, if we could go to the next document, the tribe is required to make a payment in lieu of taxes, and so this slide indicates the amount that's been paid over the years. For 2020, it was $37,578. 2021 was $76,553, and 2022 was $70,550. So I bring this before the council today because currently, the current contract ends December 10th, and so the parties would like to enter into a new contract before the end of the year. I know the council's last council meeting is December 6th, and so I'd like the council's direction on concerning the offer from the Kowalski Indian Tribe for $120,000 per year for two years with the one-year extension, but also having language in the contract that says the parties will revisit it once the hotel is open and we see that there's any increased services. And I'm also here to answer questions.
I have a question, if I may. So the $120,000 is all-inclusive of those other items? It's one package, $120,000? Did you notice the other invoices for the other mix of services and the cost in the past?
That is correct.
The 120 would be the whole thing?
Right, and so the current contract, right now, for 2022, the current contract with the 2% increase is $416,160 for all of those services. So we're going from all of those services for $416,160 to $120,000 per year.
Would they provide, so that you would look at it on an annual basis or after the hotel? I would be more comfortable with an annual basis review irrespective of when the hotel opens.
Yes, we can do an annual basis.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I agree with Council Rylander. I think the hotel is probably going to open April-ish, and so you're not going to have any data, really, until toward the end of the year anyway, and then just maybe as a, considering how much has changed over the last three or four years, I think an annual review that's agreeable to the tribe seems to be kind of the safe and prudent way to go, just because we know how things can change, and they can change back. They can decide they don't, or they're having a hard time hiring, and they have a different direction, and so that can change as well.
Right.
Sorry, one other question. The rates for the different types of services that are provided, are those updated once a year as well? In other words, escalating costs for everything, for the deputy's time, for the PA's office? You'll have a rate growth, I assume, over time, so does that happen on an annualized basis?
I do know that the jail bed rate is updated on an annual basis. I'm not certain about the, I assume the other ones are that as well, but I can look into that. I don't know how often that is calculated.
I would think that if we're going to review the tribes on an annualized basis, if that's how it works out and it's accepted, and that's the direction, that we should make sure that our costs associated with delivering those services are updated on an equal timeframe basis so that we can have apples and apples.
Yes, thank you. I can do that. Certainly. Fortunately, we have Mark Gasaway here. He can answer that current question.
Counselor, Mark Gasaway, Finance Director. So what I wanted to explain is, is we went away from having to do individual calculations, I think it was three years ago, because of the time and effort that it takes to do that. We do the jail bed day rate every year because we bill that every year. So to go in and do individual calculations for each of these services was extremely time-consuming and cost, and it wasn't efficient for us. So that's why we went to the contract for a single payment for all of the services. If we do go back to a single service type of a payment, we would have to invest the time to go back and calculate what each of those services would cost individually. So we don't do that on a regular basis except for the jail.
Well, given my concern is that, given the escalating costs in the marketplace for everything, whether it's wage increases, or materials, or anything else, that if we don't have a sense of how that's going, I understand we're not here to make a profit.
Right.
We're just trying to cover the costs, but if our costs to operate and provide those services are escalating, how do we assure the public that we are cognizant of what it's actually costing and not undercharging for what it costs? However we get there, my concern is that we just don't set a number, and you know, three years down the road, we haven't touched that number again, and so, however the mechanics need to work out, I just want to make sure that we're covering the costs, that the public isn't left holding the bag for whatever amount of money this differential could be.
And initially, we did that when we came up with the initial contract. So what Leslie's been able to demonstrate is that our volumes have decreased significantly, and our costs over the last three years haven't increased significantly. They've been fairly constant. So if we want to spend the time to do that, we could go and do the study of each of those departments, what the cost per hour would be, or what it would cost to respond to these services.
Could you just use an inflation factor?
We could.
Some sort of growth inflation factor? I mean, I don't want to spend a ton of time and effort and money on waste. It's not the point at all. I just want to make sure, you know, these last couple of years, the increase in cost inflation rate is historical 40-year high.
Right.
And that's not looking like it's slowing down a heck of a lot for a while, and so...
Absolutely, and part of this projection is based on volume of services as well. So we'll go back and take a look at what we were charging individually before we went to the consolidated contract, and project that forward and see what those costs would be based on what our latest estimates are, and make sure that we're covered.
I don't want to micromanage, I just do want to make sure that we're not observing costs that we should be passing through, however you want to get there.
And again, maybe a direct answer is, we don't always calculate a rate for all of these services. There are, like jail bed days, we do on a regular basis. So the direct answer is, is we don't always calculate that rate, but we can go back and take a look at this to make sure that it's a reasonable sum that we're asking, or the agreement's for.
Couple of comments, Madam Chair. Oh, did someone else have something? So Leslie, first of all, and Mark, and everyone that weighed into it, my first impression is that you really have done a good job exercising your due diligence here in ferreting out costs. So thanks for all the detail here. I just want a fair contract for sure to cover as best we can those costs that we incur. I just want to point out that certainly those members of the Kowalski Tribe within Clark County are a member of our public. They're not a, you know, although there's sovereignty issues, they are our constituency as well. So we definitely want to provide public safety and the custodial, well, corrections, not custodial, services that we provide to the general public. But along the theme that was just discussed, and I guess I just will frame it as a question mark, you know, we are reinvesting in our corrections staff, our jail, our, hopefully, our sheriff's department in great measure. So it's not just going to be increased costs due to inflation. We're going to be trying to get caught up in salaries and benefits. So our employees of the sheriff's department and jail services are very competitive. So certainly, we do need an ability on an annual basis to adjust costs if they need to be. So I am concerned about that as well. And let me just ask that question. Did you consider the new contracts with the guilds that we're entering into with percentage increases in salaries?
The current contract that was negotiated has, is not, there's nothing related directly with the Kowalski Tribe, as they have their own public safety. So they, our sheriff's office is not contracted to do work up there.
So that gets, while they make, there's still mutual support. Although calls have dropped off precipitously, that could reverse itself. So I'm not sure that's 100% correct.
And I believe Leslie showed that there was one that was incarcerated from Kowalski in the jail. I mean, certainly, we can look at the numbers that are coming in and look at those specifics, but the road deputies do not respond to the tribe. They would do mutual aid as they would with any other jurisdiction in our area. But we will certainly, and I actually do agree, that we need to be looking at the costs and tracking them and making sure that we have full cost recovery with all of our contracts. So we will ensure that that's taken care of.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, one of the precipitating factors in our sheriff withdrawing his support for the Portland riots was the fact that our mutual support agreement ended up leaving us with all the liability, and there was no portion of the agreement that provided for reimbursement for that mutual support over to Portland. And so there's a parallel with providing mutual support agreements with any entity.
Other questions from Council? Leslie, would you please revisit for us, for sure, the costs that are covered with the agreement for $120,000 per year? For example, does the payment in lieu of taxes, is that included?
No, they are two separate things. There's a payment in lieu of taxes.
And what else is excluded? That's great.
Okay, for the contract itself, the services that are included include law enforcement, prosecution, Indian Defense, jail services, court services, and the medical examiner.
And then what else is not included in addition to the payment in lieu of taxes?
I don't know of any other services that are provided. Those are the ones that have just been contracted with. There was discussion about using animal control, but that has not occurred, and I don't expect that it will occur in the next contract either.
I see.
One last question. So I'm just kind of cruising through the documents here. Is there actually a document that adds up all the numbers that you showed us and said, here's the amount of, the dollar volume of services we've provided, and here's what the tribe is offering in terms of a contract?
So I didn't prepare one for the council, I apologize, but I did do a cheat sheet for myself. So I went through the years, and for 2019, just, and these are the numbers that I have. For some of the court services, I didn't have much information on that, so those services are not included in this. But for 2019, the total cost was about $133,000. And then we come to 2022, and this is as of, keeping in mind, this is as of August 1. The total cost, depending on the amount of money that was charged for Indian Defense, because I used a lower amount and then a higher amount, it was, the total amount was between $36,000 and $45,000.
Okay, so currently then, and I would, you know, for my purposes, I would say certainly negotiate, but they've offered, it seems to be an amount that would cover what we're actually doing or what our current level of service is. So, I mean, if that amount covers that, and there's some room there, if we need to, you know, if our calls go up, we're still not absorbing any costs in terms of what we're responding to. So, I mean, if $120,000 covers what you're seeing as what our actual real costs are, then, I mean, it seems to me that would be in our best interest to move forward with that negotiation.
Leslie, the tribe has been building its own forces, as you said. Do you, did you have any discussions with them on their plans for that after the hotel is open? Is that going to increase proportionately, or is it going to remain stable since they've already built them up to an extent?
I don't know the answer to that question. I do know that they have built up their public safety department quite a bit, and my understanding is they expect to, you know, be able to handle a lot of that. Certainly, over time, there will likely be more calls, so they may need additional assistance in that. But I think at this point, it's difficult to kind of forecast what that will be. We'll just have to review that, as we mentioned, on a yearly basis to see what type of assistance they need and how much.
Well, speaking for myself, I certainly support the proposal that you've made for going ahead with the $120,000 for two years with us reexamining and keeping track of our costs, just to be sure, as the county manager said, that there is a full recuperation of those costs there. So that would be my own perspective. And what are you looking for from us in order to get this to come forward before or by our last meeting on December 6th this year?
Thank you, Chair Berman. What I'm looking for is a majority thumbs up so I can go back to the tribe.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I will then come back to the council later with a negotiated contract for review.
And would you reinforce their last paragraph with us that they appreciate the relationship that they have with the county? That's mutual.
I will certainly let them know. Thank you, Chair Berman.
Okay, we move now to the public safety sales tax, item 2.3 on the agenda. And Kathleen?
Yes, and Chair Berman, I would like to switch item 2.3 and 2.4 and do the jail update, because we do have some visitors this morning that I would like to introduce, and in case they have other obligations, if the council's okay with switching those two agenda items.
Is there one more who's okay?
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to do an update first, and then I'm going to introduce our jail services leadership team, and then they can actually answer any specific questions as well. So just an update, listening sessions continue weekly with the staff in the sheriff's office. This includes corrections sergeants, commanders, sheriff's support guild employees. Amber, Dave, and Brian, I believe, met with the police chiefs last week. The discussions did go well, and they will continue moving forward. As mentioned before, at the request of the sheriff's office leadership, we agreed to dedicate resources to try to finish this transition in its entirety by January 1. The corrections budget and staffing is pretty straightforward, although the support guild supports all the branches in the sheriff, so that does require additional conversation. With that said, Amber and the jail services leadership team met with the undersheriff, chief Schultz, chief Sample, and Darren, their finance manager, regarding the budget and positions. And I can share, from the work that they have done, we are more than 95% in agreement right now with all of the employee transactions. They're finalizing conversations today, and the information will be written down and sent over to the sheriff's office leadership for their final review. and sent over to the sheriff's office, office leadership for their final review. But based on the conversation, we're really close. Um, I will also remind council that there's still going to be some, a few lingering items that we'll need to address after January one potentially. Um, some of these items could be the healthcare contract, food service, and others. Um, there is some information that the sheriff's office requested in the two thousand twenty-three annual budget. Um, but they, on some of those items, they didn't have all the research done. So we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to look at what makes sense moving forward. So I anticipate if they're not done by the two thousand twenty-three um hearing or work session, um, this will be done in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three. Um, with regards, I wanted to give just a little bit update on maintenance and I want to start out by reminding the council and the public that it's important to understand that the jail, the staff, the facility, that is still under the full authority of the sheriff and their administrative team. This um change is not happening until January one, even though our leadership team has already started. Um, while, and we're very respectful of our current structure. We are trying to get some updates done in the facility now that don't need to wait until a full remodel. A sample of some of the items that were done um since October first is repairing and replacing doors in the jail. Some are outdated and some were damaged by those incarcerated. Uh, repair camera security systems, uh, replacing light fixtures, um toilets, urinals, and sinks, and some painting. Uh, we did just receive a spreadsheet from facilities of all the work items um that have been submitted and what has been taken care of. Um, I just got it this morning. So we're going to be looking at that holistically as well and try to help prioritize and get things done as we move through this transition and beyond. Um, and then we'll provide additional information as we get there. So at this time, I'm going to ask our leadership team to come up here and so that they can be on the mics and get in front of council. And it is truly my pleasure to introduce these three individuals. It's been an absolute joy and to watch them be creative and work together over the last couple of weeks as they start in their position and truly an honor to work with them. Um, first is Dave Shook, he's the director of jail services. Uh, Brian Pilakowski, the manager of jail operations, and Joe Barnett, um, the manager of jail administration.
Good morning.
So I, if council wants to ask questions of them or if you all want to provide um a couple sentences on how, from your perspective, the transition is going and, I mean, that would be great as well.
Well, good morning, council, and uh, thank you for having us here today. Um, actually, it's been quite a pleasure to uh become more personal with all the employees and the corrections staff. They are caring individuals that are worried about our current status and they are coming forward to provide information on that would be helpful in how we transition our jail services. And I look forward to having more of those discussions, not just with the employees, but other stakeholders in our community as well as the courts and some of the other, um, I guess, uh, interrelated uh programs that we're going to have to work through. Uh, understanding uh different jail processes through the country and Oregon specifically. Washington State has some dynamics that are very interesting and I think with further conversations, we'll be able to find some solutions that will help us all. So, thank you very much for having us here.
Good morning. We are working on things like uh creating the uh structure for us to become an official criminal justice agency with the Washington State Patrol. We've already submitted our application uh for an ORI number with WSP. We'll be getting that back shortly and that's the foundation for some of the legal processes going forward with booking people into the jail and those kinds of things. And so uh, it's very exciting to start this department from the ground up and just eager to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Good morning. On the operations side, we'll be meeting with the guild twice today and trying to work on mitigation of the mandatory overtime, making it a much easier place for those line staff. That's the, the main goal this week is trying to get their overtime down. We actually have a plan in place where we'll review this.
Counselors, are there any questions that you have are of our leadership team here?
Yes, I'd like to. Just ask a very basic overview type of question, if I may. Well, first of all, welcome. Thank you for being here and we too are very pleased to see this department getting underway. Knowing that the transition actually does not occur until the first of January, my question is, what is maybe the one most important thing that you are thinking of now that you really see some of, more of the inside operations that would become your goal on January first and thereafter for you to accomplish in, in your area within jail operations?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I think what's important, and my background is as a mentor and a trainer and educator, I think it's important to better understand the actual operational methods and the processes that have been used for decades and current best practices so that as we make decisions on how to better manage inmates, personnel, and our community safety, um, working with those different stakeholders, I think that's really important because while the jail may have some unique opportunities, the courts have different priorities and so do the, the justice system. And so I think it's important to better understand how some of those dynamics can be worked through better um and better communication. So Chair and counselors, I think the communication component, so that we can all understand how the system works will be uh one of our definitely priorities as we begin.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counsel Rylander?
So uh, this isn't really per se a question, more of a comment slash suggestion and, and, and maybe almost redundant based on past discussions, but uh, going forward, there are those in the public who are concerned by the separation from the sheriff's office and that that has some negative connotations and it's the wrong thing to do and, and they're worried about actually loss of transparency and visibility. And my personal belief is actually it should be as good or better than it has been before. So the sort of requests from members of the public is just to do everything possible to keep the public aware of what's going on, obviously, on those things that are appropriate and reasonable, but just making sure that the public knows that this is visible, it is open, they can, they can get answers. I mean, there's good clarity and that goes with your communications comment, but the communication is not just within this, the, the employees, but with the public as well because the, the, the trust is so critical and it's so easy to lose. I just, I want you to be successful and to do that, I want to make sure that the public is on your side and good communications is critical.
And I can remind, we do have um an email address set up, ccjail@clark.wa.gov. We've only had three emails to that from the public, but it doesn't hurt to put that information out again.
Chair, if I can add real quick to Director Shuck's comment. So the, the first six months of our transition, the main thing is staffing. We cannot do anything further with programs, building out our facility, looking at ways that we do things differently without getting our staffing levels up. So the team and I have begun to look at how we recruit, working with William and his team in HR and starting to peel back those layers of how we can get people safely and securely through the door faster to get our levels up. So that's our number one priority, um, along with what Director Shuck said about training and communication is we cannot expand our services without the staffing levels coming up safely.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Yes, Counsel Mevagee?
So with the, the transfer date that we have, um, I'm hoping it's not in stone, but uh could be flexible in case there are some impediments that come up. You know, with the uh Christmas holidays and New Year's, uh, you know, it's a kind of a downtime a year for most government offices and I'm, I'm hoping there will be a public rollout uh kind of along the comments that Counsel Rylander just said and, and maybe a status check if it's needed. If you think there's, hey, we really need to come before the council because we've come up, come up a couple of roadblocks uh that are going to take a little bit more time, um, you know, it, prior to an actual handoff. Now, if that's not necessary, if there are no glitches, understand, I'd like to see this smoothly move forward. But I'm hoping ultimately that uh if we need to lift and shift the actual physical transfer date, uh, that, you know, we're, we're going to, it's going to be conditions based that we're ready to do so.
We appreciate those comments, Counsel Mevagee, and I anticipate that you'll get that full information during our budget work session in a couple of weeks. That would include what has been completed and what hasn't, that need to extend beyond January.
Madam Chair, excuse me.
Yes, Counsel.
Yeah, and I think just along those same lines, I know when we first made this move or made this decision, we talked about a transition plan and what that might look like over a longer period of time. Clearly, we're truncating that. Um, so I think what would be helpful is even just a slide of some kind, just saying, like you said, six months we're doing staffing, you know, we have ninety-five percent of the work done already, exactly what that is, um, what our employee levels are, where they need to be, based on, you know, where you're going with it, with some timelines in place. I think just that visual will help in terms of communication and letting the community know where we are and, and certainly the council as well. I mean, this is a great update today. I'm a really visual person, so I like to see things really laid out clearly and simply and I think then it can also be on our website that's very simple and people can just go to it and see it. Uh, so I'm, I'm happy to see you here, great to meet all of you in person and, um, you know, we really look forward to the opportunity to, to make things better. And I'm just curious, from your perspective, what feedback you're getting from our corrections officers? Um, if you could share that without, you know, too much angst.
I guess the, the best feedback that we're getting is direct information about their needs and requirements and wants to make their workspace better and safer for them on a daily basis. And so as we continue to, I think yesterday we spent about three or four hours inside the jail and last Thursday and Friday, another three to four hours talking to various staff and shifts. Uh, more and more of them are opening their arms and starting to speak and sharing their specific uh areas of concern. Um, and I think that's the best part, um, because at some point, we're going to have a list of those concerns that we'll be sharing with all the employees and even to yourselves. And as we move forward, we're trying to improve those. Those are, those are definitely steps and to be known, to be heard, I think, is important for what's going on right now. So I've appreciated their openness.
Thank you, and just one more. I know one of the topics that came up during this whole discussion was this transparency issue and accountability and taking this department away from an elected position and handing it to a bureaucrat. Um, but I think already we're seeing better transparency and better accountability and we're not even through with the transition yet. And I think that, um, we'll continue to see that hopefully over the next number of years as we get updates from you guys in terms of what's happening at the, at our corrections facilities. Uh, and you know, the council has one employee and that's the county manager um, and she is accountable to an elected board. So I think we're, we're going to see a lot more and have, and the next council have the ability to move more quickly in terms of um what work might need to be done or what needs that are, exist at the jail that we just hadn't had visibility to before. So, um, so again, I think we're, we're headed in the right direction here and, and happy to have you on the team.
I'll have to ask Amber, because I believe we've um already started talking about like benchmarks and some data points that we can actually say, like you said, with dates that we want to accomplish things by and progress and if we don't meet it, why? And so that, that can be a dashboard that's online.
That's correct, Kathleen. So Counsel Olson, to your point, the transparency, the visuals, we're working on right now with the sheriff's office. When we get the agreement of where staff's going to land this week, then we can have, um, and once the sides have agreed to where people are going to land, we can have that out to everybody. That this is what's going to be supported, this is what's going to move over January first with the benchmarks that you've laid out, because that's very important for everyone to see. I'm also a visual person and I like to be able to see that with a glance of where we are and where we, where we're going.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And right along that line, um, Kathleen and I agreed some time ago to have this jail update as a regular part of the council time agenda. And uh, we agreed earlier to um invite the leadership team in today so that even though it's very early in the game, we would all have the opportunity to make visual contact. I would propose, Kathleen, in a public way right now, that we continue this uh jail update in the foreseeable future, because I think there is great value in that um beyond and in addition to what is online. You know that I'm a great proponent of things that are online because there can be graphs and spreadsheets and things that communicate information in a very thorough way, but to have this personal time together every week, it certainly need not be as long in duration as we are going right now, but just to have a touchstone so that we know what is new, what is accomplished, what is not accomplished because of something that council needs to do. It can be a, a two-way street for sure. So I, I would like to see that continue in the foreseeable future. Would you agree to that?
Yes, that's the plan. And, um, and I haven't done it yet, but I know Counsel Mevagee asked last um time we did the update. We'll, I'll provide a brief summary of these updates and also put those online as well for those with the link to this conversation, so for those who were not able to attend today.
Is there anything else that council wishes to bring up today? Well, hearing nothing, thanks to all of you for being here. This was an important time together and uh we appreciate it. We wish you well and I, and nothing else was said about the facility improvements, so I'd just like to pop back to that. You, you opened with that as a part of your, your uh comments, Kathleen. And I think that those improvements, uh, because they are visual, can be very important. Something as simple as painting over some very unwelcome messages in the jail. And those have sometimes, they've been up there for way too long. And to get rid of those, it, it's not a big thing as far as facilities is concerned perhaps, but it is as far as the symbolic message that is involved there. And um, that's important and I'm glad, very happy, that those things are being done as well as everything else. So thank you. Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Thanks again, you all. We move back up on the agenda to two point three, the public safety sales tax. And you're welcome to stay for this if you wish, of course, because much of this applies to you too. Kathleen and I suppose Mark.
Yes, Mark, um, yes, Mark and Emily will also be part of this conversation. Kristin, if you could pull up the spreadsheet. Um, so this is just a preliminary conversation with council um, and I know we're going to have more to help solidify as we start accruing some of our public safety sales tax in two thousand twenty-three. This is a ten-year forecast that the budget office has put together. Gosh, it's a little big. So you can see, this is very similar to how our six-year forecast for general fund is put together. So it has the revenue expenditures, um, but the forecast modifiers. And then you can see at the bottom um what that um available projected ending fund balance is. Um, and then I think there's a percentage that has to be used for public safety and then a percentage for others as well. So I, these are just numbers that we plugged in just for the sake of dialogue today. Um, first one is under the budget forecast modifier, so under the blue. It's about eight hundred ninety-seven thousand. This is the carryforward amount that the sheriff's office originally proposed. I believe it's been two budget cycles ago, two thousand twenty potentially, um, for the body camera program that council did approve. It was recommended contingent on our revenue source and it was carried forward into the two thousand twenty-one budget and it's also going to be recommended to carry forward into the two thousand twenty-three budget. So that's that dollar amount down below. So that talked about um the ongoing PDRs and support that they needed in the sheriff's office for body cameras. The salaries, again, this is just a number that I just plugged in this morning. It's about one point two million. about 1.2 million. I did use the same escalation as our other salaries, and that we used, which is 3.5%. This is based on the current DSG bargaining efforts. And so for those who were on the meeting yesterday, I can clarify that the reason why we pulled the deputy sheriff's guild contract from yesterday's agenda, that contract goes into effect on January 1, but we wanted to make sure we could identify the correct budget codes to support that contract. And I wanted to make sure we had this conversation with the full council before I said I wanna, I'd recommend putting the $1.2 million increase in that contract to public safety sales tax. Our contingency that we have in the county is about 3 million. That covers collective bargaining agreements, reclassifications, and salary increases. And so I didn't want to use almost half of that amount for one contract going into next year, which is why I was, I am recommending to use that contract increase amount into the public safety sales tax. I will note, too, on the number for 2023 for the public safety sales tax, the revenue is a little bit less than the other years because we don't collect for two months, because we, they don't start, they start collecting in January, but we don't get it until March. So there's a two-month deficit for that, for the entirety of that year. Other areas that we could put in here is additional funding for corrections staff. I think, you know, as Amber and the leadership team is going through the staffing, I mean, even talking with, I think, some of our partners, like with Spokane, they also have a, I think they said 30 FTE that are unfilled right now, we're about 28, but they have more FTE dedicated to the jail than we do. So I, you know, I would recommend that we look at that, not necessarily today, we need to do the analysis to see how many FTE do we need. We need to get to our budgeted FTE first, but we may need to increase there as well. So that could be an item. And I also wanted to mention the courts. In the 2023 budget request, you'll see this, but there's, they have some project positions that are getting them through next year. I did recommend in that budget, and it is actually online now, the recommendations, one permanent FTE, but they have not been adding staff for years, like many of our general fund departments, and they do continue to grow. And so this, that might be a conversation later down the road as well, if we want to dedicate any of this funding to help support any of the courts or law and justice system if there's a need. And then finally, another area that we could look at for this tax, too, is if we want to put any money aside for the facility upgrades as we move forward. I mean, this is pretty flexible on the spending. Like I said, I'm not, I know based on an email communication that Councilor Mevage had sent out, it doesn't appear that the sheriff's office has done any more internal or analysis on the body camera program, on what program they're going to use, what they're gonna recommend, and moving forward. As you know, the city of Vancouver is just implementing some. I'm hopeful and I will talk to the newly-elected sheriff as well. Hopefully, they'll have a conversation with the city. The city did share with me that a lot, their IT work was significant in getting the body cameras up. It's not something that we can just, you know, start today. And I believe in the communication with Councilor Mevage, it was stated that they're looking towards third quarter of 2023 to maybe start implementing with some of the body cameras. And so there, since that work hasn't been done yet by the sheriff's office, we're more than happy to partner with them. I still wanted to get this in front of the council, get your thoughts of any ideas that you might want included so that we can start including these as the placeholders until we finalize the discussion. I, I guess I, the one I would ask is on the 1.2 million, I will put that on, I believe, the December 6 council meeting, because that's the standard, the budget will be approved, so it'll be within existing budget, to be able to cover that, but I just wanted to make sure the council was okay with that.
I have some initial comments, Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilor.
So I think regarding the body cams and dash cams, you know, I think the RFQ process, once initiated, will probably finalize or answer a lot of these questions and, and the general framework, framework that the sheriff is now kind of planning on rolling out body cams and dash cams. So I agree with fencing this money in the budget the way you want to do it, you know, and you've mentioned all the priorities that I generally have anticipating this sales tax comes to fruition as forecasted. You know, we have so many needs and we do want to reinvest. And of course, from the courts to the PA's office, the main focus right now for me is the sheriff's department and correctional services. You know, our salaries are, you know, our fixed, what will our fixed costs be that this sales tax can help support with staffing? You know, we have to fill all these vacancies. We have to fill them all, before we really even know what our full-time FTE really should look like. You know, how much should services, correctional services grow in staffing? How much should patrol grow in staffing? We can't get to that until we fill all the vacancies, really, but we have to plan for it. The other big area is all the capital costs. You know, we, we already heard in great measure that we need more meeting space across the board for, for the jail, you know, not only for contact visits with, with defense attorneys, but care providers to do evaluations. There are just as insufficient space, they're all drawing on like one office for contact visits. That needs to change, reception, Sallyport, a new booking area, you know, those are big, probably a new, new structure, you know, that's a big capital cost, but this fund can help resource that. We're also talking about jail mental health services, and of course, mental health sales tax will help resource that process, but there's so many things on the table that we want to do. I think we just really need to kind of put broad categories of between capital improvement, mental health treatment, and salaries and benefits, you know, and, and start looking at a strategic plan to stay within our budget, within the sales tax and, and our normal resources that we have coming into the general fund. So I, I, I think you've touched on all the main areas that I'm concerned about and want to see some great progress in, in the next year, especially once the sales tax starts being received physically in March.
And I can, Amber just reminded me as well, there might be an opportunity as well for council to look at indigent defense or public defender's office as we move forward. I believe there'll be a presentation coming at the end of November from Amber and staff about that program, too. So, and we can start strategizing what that could look like and when it would potentially be phased in, if that's the direction that we go, and put some placeholders in here so you can see the impact on the sales tax.
Now, that's huge. I didn't mean to gloss over that. I didn't think that. Thank you for that work you're doing on that, Amber.
Several quick questions, and they are quick. I take it, Emily, that all of the city funds are completely removed from the spreadsheet before us? So that's...
That's correct, yeah.
...out of sight.
This is just the county's portion, right?
Got it. The 897K that is listed down there as funds that the sheriff's office had not spent last year or the year before, are those general funds that had been allocated to them?
Yeah, so the council decided, and I think Emily said that this was in the, what year was that, Emily? 2021 spring supplemental. So the council at the time decided to put that funding in the county manager's office, so it is sitting in the county manager's office budget, and that, that has been carried forward. And Mark did share, and we can plug this in as well for our next conversation, based on a study that was done for standards for body camera programs, I believe it was 11 or 12 FTE was the standard, so we can compare that to what's being requested by the sheriff and the PA and show that study with council as well.
And that brings me to one of my next questions. We clearly need to have some presentations on the major components of this, which, as I see it, would entail, and, and not looking at it programmatically, but as far as just categories of expenses, the cams themselves, for one thing, and the second thing would be the body of, of employees that would be needed in order to handle all the aspects of the program. I know I, for one, would like to see the, the nitty-gritty detail on what other cities have found works for them, perhaps even what Vancouver is, is finding from their more immediate experience and so on, and be able to calculate that in. I don't know if those presentations might be possible, say, by the end of November, something as, as quick as that, when the new sheriff is voted up on, but that would be very helpful with funds coming to us by March. And I'm, that date of, of March, when the funds reach the county, is becoming closer, isn't it? So I don't know when those presentations would be possible, but I'd like to see those scheduled as quickly as possible. When do you think that might be?
I'll need to talk to staff about that. I mean, we, we may be able to do it, we are in the middle of our annual budget process, too, and, but we can see what we can do, and I know, like I said, we can share the industry standards, we can probably get the city's information pretty easily. They are just ramping up, so even if we had the full program figured out, the number of staff we're gonna need, based on the communication that Councilor Mevage shared, you know, we're not gonna be spending the full amount in the first year, because I think it's a phased approach on how many come in and getting our IT infrastructure set up right. And so I don't, while we may need 11 or 12 FTE, that's not gonna be a need that we need like next year or the, probably even the following year, but we can look at some of that analysis. So I will talk to staff and report back next week on when we can anticipate coming back to council with more details.
That'd be great, and as soon as that has occurred, then we can be much more specific on the, the numbers that will go ultimately into this spreadsheet.
And just based on that conversation, I'm not trying to complicate the life of Kathleen or Amber, but one thing you might consider, because correctional officers would really benefit from body cameras, too, under many circumstances, and, and that will be jail services program. Now, I don't know, I don't anticipate that the sheriff is going to drag his feet on rolling out body cams and getting this going. That was one of the initial reasons why I made that contact a few weeks ago, just to make sure where they were at so that we could quickly address these body cams and dash cam need for the entirety of the county. But now you have a subset jail services that you're gonna be directly watching, you know, that, hopefully, it'll be one program, but maybe not. So I want you to keep, keep that in the back of your mind.
Yeah. We, we can look into that. I know the jail does have cameras, there are some blind spots, we know that, and, and then there might be some things that we need to work through, like we can't have a camera on somebody when they're walking in, somebody's using, you know, the, the washroom, you know, so we have to be careful on some of that. But we'll, I'll talk to legal and staff to see what would make sense, and maybe it's enhancing the current cameras in the jail, which would be part of the jail remodel, because like I said, there are a couple of blind spots in that jail that nobody can see what's going on.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilor.
Thank you. So a couple of questions, Kathleen, that 800 and, I can't, 867,000, right? It's been, I can't read it, sorry. It's been, it was, it was budgeted in the spring of 2021.
Correct.
And I'm just curious, and I know it's in the county manager budget, and I know we've had some preliminary work and previous work done in terms of research for camera programs, but, but it doesn't appear that anything's been done in that period of time?
Correct. Oh, because we did not have a revenue source to sustain the expense side of the body cameras until the tax passed.
Okay, so we, there was no more continued inquiries or research into what programs and what costs and...
So I can say, Mark has done a lot of research on the body cameras and has, has seen what other cities has done and looking at those standards. Based on the communication we saw last week from Councilor Mevage, the sheriff's office has not done any additional research.
Okay, because we passed, yeah, that, that passed in August, right?
Yes.
So I would have thought, and actually, I was asked directly, are you gonna wait until we get the sales tax money to start moving toward a body camera program? And I flatly said no, but clearly, that's not up to me. So I'm just curious, right now, we're just sort of in a status quo until we get a new sheriff in town? Is that kind of where we're at? Okay, all right, we'll let that one lie. And then I guess my second question is, I imagine then you're asking or asking for our agreement or sort of a head nod that this budget for the deputy guild is gonna come out of the sales tax?
Yes, I would, because when this comes back for council, the council meeting on December 6, I would like to have this tax as the coding option for that increase of the contract.
Okay, and so that will be in perpetuity, then? That will come out of the public, the safety sales tax?
Yeah, the first two months of the contract will be general fund, and then starting after we start receiving the public safety sales taxes, then that amount would be applied to the public safety sales tax amount.
And so then the contingency fund will stay sort of stabilized at where it is right now, unless it's needed for something else?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilor.
So I gotta be careful about assuming anything with the old acronym, but it seems to me that we've got, we're talking about a lot of different potential uses for this sales tax public safety fund. And, and I'm, I'm absolutely convinced that you're going to do what I'm about to suggest, because this makes sense, but anyway, suggestion. I, I guess we, I, I see this sort of as different buckets of uses of funds, some which are sort of more one-timey, but some which are ongoing, et cetera, and I think it's already been suggested that somewhere in there, there's a prioritization of the use of funds on a projected going forward. So you've got a 10-year projection, you're looking at X number of dollars and so forth. So I'm, I'm hoping that there will be something in parallel that would say, we want to use, anticipate using approximately this many dollars in this timeframe for this. It's an ongoing which repeats, or it's a one-time, it's just, my concern is that we could have so many demands on the dollars and so many great ideas on how the money could be used that suddenly the fund is empty, because we've, we've not necessarily organized or planned as well. I'm sure that's not gonna happen, but I just want to go on record to make sure that, again, that we can show the public that we've got a clear plan for what we're doing and how we're going to do it. Most of the people will never comment or even pay attention, but I just want to make sure that it's really clear.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a very good question. So yes, I wanted to have this dialogue first to, to hear council's feedback. What we will do now is go back with the finance team and just start plugging in some of the conversations that we've had and what makes sense, or get an estimate placeholder and put that out. Like I said, we can say body cameras, you know, maybe it's the third quarter, fourth quarter, whatever, and so you can see that ongoing cost of when it starts, and you'll see it by year. And then, but we'll list them all. We do have to do body cameras, we do have to do sheriff's office staffing and other related expenses. That was identified in the ballot measure, so we, we have to use this and we want to use it for body cameras. The rest of the funding is council's priority. We will put everything, and I can certainly work with the staff and come up with our recommendation of what would make sense in the priorities, but that priority is going to be set by the council. So hopefully, we can have like the whole list, what it would look like, what it would cost, and then if council agrees with the priorities, great. If not, we can move them around or, or adjust as council wants. But yes, we'll have all of that detail.
I, I think with the new incoming council, I think that would be terrific, because they will have firsthand opportunity to share their input and their guidance for their next four years. So I, I think that would be terrific, if it can happen in that sort of first quarter of 2023.
Yeah, and some of this, in, you know, with Chair Barwin's request, we will have placeholders before the end of the year, if we can. But this will be reviewed annually with our budget as well, just like we see the six-year forecast for general fund and mental health sales tax road fund, this will be part of that annual review, so council will be able to talk about the, the spending, the priorities and all that stuff annually going forward.
Thank you.
I don't think I heard any opposition on the 1.2 million and identifying, okay, I see a two thumbs up from a counselor, so there you go. Okay, I see a two thumbs up from a counselor, so there you go. Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have on this this morning, unless council has any other further questions.
Just very quickly, just to touch on what Counselor Olson said. I want to assure the public, as soon as we have a sheriff-elect, I personally am going to be sitting down and talking about body cams and dash cams and get that on the top of their priority list to roll out.
Well, I, I just have to say, I think that should be a council role with, with the sheriff-elect, so that it's definitely in the public arena, you know, and, and not, and beyond with just one of us. And I'm, I'm sure that's what you meant, but I just wanted to clarify.
No, it's absolutely not what I meant. We, we always have a lot of meetings off record where, because otherwise we have to have a public meeting. If it's through law and justice and other committees that I sit on, we have a lot of in-between public meeting work that has to go on. So yes, I absolutely meant that I'm going to personally sit down with the sheriff-elect and start pushing on this and then get it into the public as soon as they, they can respond and, and know what their priorities are going to be and make it worthy of a public meeting.
Well, as, as long as I'm chair, there will also be a council discussion with the sheriff-elect on those points so that it will be in the public arena. I think that is of critical importance. Otherwise, it will be counselor by counselor by counselor by counselor by counselor, five of us individually with the, the sheriff-elect. And that's not what I would envision is going to lead to good decision-making. That's my own perspective, so that's why I, I really prioritize keeping it in the public arena.
I'm not disagreeing with that aspect. I'm just, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that, Counselor.
Okay, so if there is nothing else on this right now, I believe we're ready to move on, although we could spend the whole day with this one topic. But I think we've made a, a, a good dent in understanding where it's going to go from here, so thank you. Now, let's move to new business, is there any?
Not today, thank you.
How about Counselor Reports? I'm not sure where to put this particular item. It could be under Old Business, it could be under Lindsay's topics, but there were, there was a notation in the minutes of October 26 showing that Lindsay asked if we wished to send a letter to the state broadband office prior to last Friday. And I presume that that was done because we had indicated yes. I wondered if we could see a copy of that letter that went forward.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I can make sure that everybody gets a copy of that.
That would be terrific. And, and like I say, then we can skip that when we come to your report, if that's where that actually goes. Are there any other Counselor Reports? Okay, work session requests, I believe there are none. And Lindsay, on policy issues.
Just one quick update for you. So the Association of County Human Services is, is kind of part of the umbrella of WASAC. And they released their legislative priorities and their, their top priority is prioritizing funding for homeless shelters and programs to avoid what they're calling a funding cliff. Because there are three sources of funding for homeless shelters and grants that are sunsetting in 2023, including the shelter program grant and some of the other hotel leasing grants that were out there for the state and other grants specific to the pandemic relief. And so these, all counties across the state are utilizing these funds and, including Clark County. And I know one of our key priorities is to continue the emergency shelter grant funding. So it's a good thing to see this on their priority list. I know also that Josh has spoken to Representative Harris and others about this. And Representative Harris in particular was very excited to, to learn about this and is on board to help us advocate for this in January. That's it for me.
Does that dovetail well with what we had on our list as far as the homeless priority?
Correct, it's the same. It's the homeless shelter program grant. So this is the one that Michael Torres and Vanessa identified that would be sunsetting and we currently use as part of our homeless response. And if this funding goes away, we don't really have anything that would backfill this. And so we're not unique across the state. So that's something that was on our priority list. And now it's good to see that not only is it within Commerce's budget ask that is currently being scrubbed by OFM to be part of the governor's budget, but it's also part of WASAC's priorities under the Association of County Human Services.
Thank you. If there is nothing for the good of the order at this time, we will move into executive session. That session will be, we're counting on 60 minutes. Currently it's 10:16. I would say that that would probably make it by the time we, we get there and get back to 11:20. There will be council present for this discussion. And we do not anticipate a report after, is that correct, Leslie?
That is, sorry, that is correct. There will be no after action.
And that, this is all per RCW 42.30.110, Section 1G. And with that, we will see you back at 11:20 in order to adjourn council time. So this is moving on until then.
Hello, the council is extending their executive session for 10 more minutes and will be returning at 11:30. Thank you.
The date is Wednesday, November 2, 2022. It is exactly 11:30 AM. We have been in council time for our meeting, went out for an executive session that took slightly over an hour. We are returning back to council time for the singular purpose of, since there is no after action to be taken today, of adjourning council time. Therefore, this meeting is adjourned.